Hi cozy friends! What are we doing today? Oh, I can show you the fireplace today. There's some slight progress on it. Also, just look how lovely the hobby room office looks right now. Look at Azula.
You are so cute. You are so cute.
Guess where Chila is?
Hi little baby.
Hi little baby. It's gonna be a couple days of just getting my life together, being a little productive, doing some resets around the house with work, with everything. I just feel like after certain seasonal shifts, I'm in reset mode. I'm like, let's get back on track, right? Halloween happened, now I feel like we're going into like the other, the rest of the cozy season, the last two months of the year. This is the time to really like hone in intentions and make sure everything is set up for the next year. I cannot believe we are already at the end of the year. Scary! Anyways, let me show you the fireplace, um, progress. The fireplace progress. They are, the quality, like, okay. When we moved in, my realtor found me my contractor for like all the stuff we did when we were moving in. And he's like, "Do you want cheap and quick? Do you want middle of the road? Or do you want really, really expensive and nice and good quality?" I was like, "Just give me cheap and quick." Cause at the time, I was like, I just want everything to be done. And it was things that like were okay if they were done kinda quickly. So it was like flooring and paint. I was like, "Just cheap and quick, it's fine." But there are definitely like little things that I look back and like this would have been like pristine if I went with somebody else. But seeing the like difference in quality in this fireplace, it's like every single thing like is just perfectly done. I love it, I love it. I'll show you. I have to break through, break through the jail. Which is so nice that they have this also. Um, okay, so here's the base of it. They're doing like the plastering and I think the texture today. And then they're gonna go back and paint it and do tile. But how nice is it? It's like a little, little wall bump out. And then this is the little pocket for the TV box and then the plug for the TV. And then the tile is gonna be along here and then on the inside. And then it's gonna come out here also. Yay! That's the update. I'll give more updates as they come. Before we get into our resets, I wanna chat with y'all about our cozy sponsor today, which is Quince. So if you need a little wardrobe reset, see what I did there? See what I did there? If you need to reset your wardrobe, I'm gonna show you a few of my favorites from Quince. So a couple vlogs ago, I showed you a little fall haul. It was this little workout set. Little bike shorts and then a little matching tank. And then I got two oat neck, great quality tanks that you can wear with like anything. You could dress it up, you could dress it down. And then lastly, the Mediterranean fig candle. I love that candle so much and I think I'm gonna get some more for the rest of the house too. Because I am selfishly hoarding it right now to my upstairs rooms. I have personally shopped at Quince for over a year now. I wanna say it's probably close to two years now. Because I have just always come back to them for their quality, for their price. And then just like the capsule wardrobe of it all. Like, they have such solid basics that you know you can keep in your wardrobe for a long, long time. And Quince works with top tier manufacturers without the middleman. So you can get that really good quality without the markup of it all. It's all priced like 50% less than what you'd find at a similar brand. I also love that Quince only works with factories that use safe, ethical, and reasonable manufacturing practices. So if you wanna reset and upgrade your wardrobe, your home and more with high-end essentials from Quince, go to the link in my description to get free shipping and 365 day returns. Thanks, Quince! Okay, let's go reset. We got a new microwave. Got a new microwave. Cause this one, I think I've said this before, but the numbers don't do this. And then the other week, it just turned off. It was plugged in, it just turned off, wouldn't turn back on. And Bree and I were like sitting here hoping it would turn back on. Then it just turned back on randomly. But it was a sign. That was a sign. It was a sign I needed to get a new one. And I did all my Reddit research. This is the best, number one best microwave Reddit research.
Careful babe.
Is it smaller? Yay! New microwave! Hey friends, it's a reset day for me, which means everything from like cat stuff to bedding, to bathroom, to office, to counters and organizing. I just like to get everything together, feel like things are organized and on a surface level at least tidy. That's what we're gonna do today. I wanna start with the bathroom counter because it is a mess after travel. I just dump everything on the counter and then I wait till I have the time to organize it. So now's the time, let's go. Vampire Diaries for background. I just sat down and I feel like a feeling just washed over me that I need to get rid of [BLEEP]. So I'm gonna do that. Little trick if you didn't know, museum gel is perfect for holding things like this in place. Little organizers. You just put it on the bottom, stick it to the bottom of the drawer. And then it doesn't move around. It's fan- it's phenomenal. Okay, so I got this. This is like a laundry, like the washer holder opener for laundry. But I got it for a shower door, cause I wanna keep our shower door open too, so it doesn't get mildewy. I have this to like put this on the tile so that it'll attach to the tile. But I need a second circular adhesive thing for this. So I'll just put this over here, I guess. We're moving on to the office. Bathroom is organized and clean. The nook is organized. I think I'm gonna try and pare this down. I have to take out the fall leaves anyways, but I think I'm gonna try and organize this a little bit better too. Okay y'all, I organized the desk area. I organized the nook area and the bookcase so that it's a little bit more streamlined. I took all the fall stuff out, so I'm gonna put this away now. And now I just have my closet to work on, so I'm gonna get to that. Okay, all good in here. I'm gonna bring these two downstairs. Okay y'all, laundry is in. And I was just going over some, some of my to-dos and like deadlines and stuff. And was getting very overwhelmed because there's a lot of overlapping things. I have a trip towards the end of the month and then a trip very early, first week of next month. So I'm trying to plan around a lot of submissions and deadlines that I have. And then also just like vlogs and gaming channel videos. There's always a lot for winter. It's usually like Black Friday and just like holiday season. There's a lot of partnership opportunities. And so, so whenever I feel overwhelmed, I like to write it on a physical calendar. I like to do multiple things. I have it on my digital, I have it on my planner. But then I also like to write it on like a really big physical calendar so that I can actually see everything. I can visually see where the things need to happen. Um, and that's especially helpful for me when I have trips because then I could see, okay, I need to film these things before I go on the trip, so that I have it done before the trip, if that makes sense. So, I have written most of the things down, but I'm just going through the last bits through. I have some January things that I'm planning out as well, so I'm just gonna finish that up. Okay, so then sometimes when I have all of this written out, as I do, then go to my digital calendar. Since that has like a more detailed breakdown by the hour, it's like more time blocking. I can then plug in where I need to film certain things. So like if all of these things are due this week and this week, where can I film them? The week prior or the week of? And I'm looking at this and there just doesn't seem like there's enough days. That's what this is for, so I just go through. I make sure everything has a day for filming. I'm gonna do that now. Everything is organized and I have not even scheduled in short form content, so. That will just have to find itself along the way, which is how it usually goes, so. Okay, next thing's, next thing's next. That's a new one. Next thing, I have to do some filming. I'm gonna do that, let's do that.
I'm gonna do that, let's do that. Alright y'all, I finished the first video, I'm on to the next. It's time to say goodbye to the fall decor. I brought all of the Christmas stuff out. I don't think I'm ready for Christmas stuff fully, but here and there. But I'm gonna pack away all the Halloween stuff. Alright y'all, it is dark out, basically. It's night, it's felt good because all of my spaces are clean for the upcoming week. And then I also got some fun little decorating done. So I did just like a tiny bit of stuff in here and filmed a little Sunday, Spend a Sunday with Me, where I did some of that decorating in short form. And then I did the little stars that were so cute, I love those, those are adorable. I'll make sure to link everything for y'all whenever I can, because some of the stuff is old. I'll follow up with some resets and more things tomorrow. Alright, let's go. Okay friends, it's work time, it's work time, it's work time. Drink tour, as y'all know, I have to have a minimum of two drinks on me at all times. Usually three, but minimum of two. Got water, of course. I'm back on my barley tea bullshit, so good, love barley tea. It tastes like cardboard and you either love it or you hate it, but I personally love a little bit of cardboard. For example, I started trying to get more fiber in my diet because I've learned it's very, very important. I forget how many grams of fiber you're supposed to get, I think it's like... Twenty-five, twenty-five grams of fiber per day, which is a lot, like it's a lot. Fiber is in vegetables and stuff and some fruits, but most people aren't just naturally getting twenty-five grams of fiber. So I've been eating this fiber cereal, it's this one, I love this one, but then I've also been trying this one. And both of them have such a distinctly like cardboard taste that I just love. And if you don't like that, I'm so sorry, you're gonna have to figure out another way to get your fiber intake in. I have my sparkling cider that I got from the pumpkin patch, it's so good. It's, I think, some of the best sparkling apples I've ever had. So that's my drink tour, and let's get to work!
Hi friends, I was just finishing up editing the vlog and I realized I didn't have a little outro. Two things, I'm gonna show you the fireplace update. It's still being finished, but it's basically like you can see what it's gonna look like at the end. And then, also, this came in the mail today. I, okay, y'all know I love Ohohoo markers. It took me a while to come around to them because I didn't understand how alcohol markers worked. And I was like, I just hate that they bleed through! But, the point of alcohol markers is that they blend well. And like these ones specifically, Ohohoo, the brand, it's just, it just has, it's such good quality, it blends so well. I love them, I'll never go back. These when you wanna do like more of like the coloring technique and stuff. Ohohoo, I love them so much. I love Bobby Good's, I have like so many of her coloring books, I think I have all of her coloring books. Anyways, Ohohoo and Bobby Good's had a coloring collab and they sent me it! They sent me it, and I am so happy because when I went to check, it like released at 6pm today. I went to check just because I was curious, sold out, immediately, everywhere, sold out. I hope that they bring them back so that y'all can get them if you didn't know that this was happening. But you get like a bunch of cute colors that like Bobby picked out. Actually, I think her name is not actually Bobby, I think I realized that when I was talking to her about some other book, my, my book related stuff, I was like, oh my god, your name is not Bobby. She picks these colors out and they're so perfect, they're so cute, so really cute colors, and then a cute little carrying case. And then, I'm sorry if I'm making some of you sad because it's sold out, but I just have to share it because I'm, this is like the perfect, this is one of my favorite collaborations ever. And then a little silicone sheet with her designs on it to put in the back so that it doesn't bleed through.